Go like this and see a blue flame. No, I know, I know.
The Muscatine City Council will come to order. Fran, would you do a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Raywall.
Here.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Natfig. Shahadi.
Present.
Bynum.
Present.
Phillips.
Present.
Fred. Six present and one absent, your honor.
Six.
Five present.
Two absent.
Oh.
Five to two.
Correct, five.
That's right. Five absent and two present.
Okay.
Five present.
Five absent and two present.
Very good, very good. Folks, would you rise during me in our pledge of allegiance? Frustrating.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's the water down. Why is it caving? It's doing it to you.
They got tainted water.
Good evening, folks. If there is anyone in council chambers that would like to talk to council tonight about an issue or an item that is not included on tonight's agenda, now would be the time to come to the podium, put your name and address. Very good. I would like to seize this opportunity to welcome the city's new housing director, if you will, Jody Royal Goodwin. Everyone say hi.
Welcome.
All right.
Jody comes to us from Reno and most recently Carroll, but grew up in Wapalo. Thank you, thank you. So she's coming back home, coming back home.
Wapalo, Iowa, right?
Yes.
Very good. Let's move on. The consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda which includes items 6A, items 9A through B, item 12A through E, and tonight's bills totaling $2,165,384.58?
So moved, Your Honor.
Osama.
Second, Your Honor.
Second. Phil, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion carries five to zero. Okeydoke, dropping down to item 11A. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution releasing a real estate mortgage under the 2009 CDBG owner occupied residential rehabilitation program for 1407 Mill Street. The property owner received the maximum $24,999 in funding assistance through a five-year forgivable loan. Under the program, 20% of the loan has been forgiven annually with a final 20% forgiven on July 9th, 2015. Staff is recommending city council take action to release the mortgage. This project represents the second of seven mortgages that have been released under this program. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted? Osama, Bob.
Second.
Second. Jeanette, in this, any discussion? And this is a roll call, beginning with Bob.
Aye.
Osama.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
And Jeanette.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Item B. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution awarding the contract for the T-Hanger Connector Road project at the municipal airport. Three bids were received for this project with a low bid from Muscatine Bridge Company in the amount of $139,767.80. The engineer's estimate for the project was $141,593. It is staff recommendation city council accept the low bid as submitted. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Phil?
Second.
Second, Osama. Any discussion? Also a roll call, beginning with Phil.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Jeanette.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
And Osama.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Item C. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution awarding the contract for the Diana Queen Construction Project. One bid was received from Higher Construction in the amount of $269,361.8. An alternate bid was used to evaluate the cost of adding sidewalk on Steamboat Way as requested by city council. This bid was $8,318.70, making a total bid amount of $277,679.78. The engineer's estimate for this project was $282,028. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Jeanette.
Second, Your Honor.
Second. Phil, any discussion?
Just to clarify, this does include a sidewalk.
This includes the additional sidewalk that you had requested during the council meeting.
That's what I thought. I just wanted, wanted to hear it. Thank you.
Anyone else, council? This is a roll call, beginning with Jeanette.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Osama.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
And Mike.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Item D. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to enter into a subscription agreement for collecting digital data, digital data records for community development inspections. Staff is recommending city council approve the annual subscription agreement for electronic digital services. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Mike. Second, anyone?
Second.
Bob, any discussion? This is a voice vote.
Is that for Mr. Govey, the department?
Yes.
What are you collecting, Bob? Dave?
Well, instead of trash, I'm collecting data. How's that?
Different, so.
It's the same difference, but the point is, this is to make our, so we don't have to increase staff, we're making it much more efficient. Besides, we're bringing in stuff from manual files to be able to do inspections while you're onsite and be able to generate those reports onsite directly to the customer and back to our servers. And the data is collected digitally instead of manually.
Eliminating paperwork.
Right. And we've had, as you'll see in there, we had extensive evaluation done on the security and the backup systems involved. It's like the cloud, so it's all done wirelessly. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else, council?
What's the total cost of this?
Upfront cost is the eight grand, excuse me, the 12,000 plus the one-time setup fee, so it's an annual amount going forward. But the additional cost that was not accounted for will be covered through, well, one, the savings over the price of the equipment and staff costs.
So the initial cost, setup cost, is how much?
Annual fee, let's see, budgeted 12, the initial annual fee is $9,500 plus the 8,000 dollar setup fee, one-time setup fee.
Okay, so annually it's gonna be?
$9,500.
Yeah, going forward it'll be $9,500, but this one time it's gonna be.
Just, which inspection services, all of them?
Well, there's three or four categories of building inspections, electrical, mechanical, you know all the different types, plumbing and such. Then you have the rental housing, the nuisance abatements, and we've added zoning, planning and zoning in here so that we're not giving permits out when it's not been zoned properly. So there's a number of different inspection applications that we're including in this, and again, it's unlimited and there's quite a bit of management reporting is done as well, which we didn't see a lot of in the other candidates that we had demonstrated.
Okay, so, and you and your staff are all, all on board with using this system?
Yes, in fact, they're kind of excited about it. We already have the iPad, we already have the equipment done because we had more than enough to bring it forward, preparing for this. And this was done in an in-depth session when I was going over the whole game plan of the.
Was that the budgeted item?
Yes.
Yes.
Other than the one-time setup fee.
The annual operating fee was budgeted at 12,000. What was not anticipated by the IT department or our budget was the one-time setup fee. But we have the savings between what was budgeted and what came in for a bid, plus we have maneuvering of some of our staff because we've had some staff changes recently, as you are well aware, that have allowed us to make up the difference. I put those dollar amounts at the bottom of the memo.
GovQA is a well-known national firm that I'm very familiar with.
Well, we tried this a number of years ago, long before you got here, and we purchased the system and then it wasn't used. And so if you're willing to use it, fine, but.
Council of Fitzgerald, I think that that's a very valid point and one that we were very careful about. That's why we insisted on developing an implementation plan. So once approved, we're going into final negotiations of the agreement. There's some negotiating points. We submitted a sample agreement with this package, you could get an idea, but that's not the final terms that we're going to agree to. And then secondly is the implementation starting the first week of September, and we've got a good, strong two months of installing this and training.
So this'll track a building inspection to where you don't, if some, currently if somebody doesn't call for the final and you're busy, you have a lot of inspections to catch up on, they may not ever, ever get their final because there is no way to, other than chase the paper, to actually have it pop up and say this one hasn't been inspected.
We've been depending upon manual systems for way too long and no flags go up and say, oh, you've got to finish this. You gotta issue the certificate of occupancy or temporary certificate of occupancy. This provides us a schedule of different inspections based off the pace of the contractor's work or their schedule. And that's what most of the work we're doing is in the, I mean, some of the procedures we've done is put a lot of emphasis on site planning, which saves a lot of additional inspections that don't necessarily have to happen. But this is a great assistance to that.
Anyone else, council? Very good, thank you, Dave. This is a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion carries five to zero. Item E. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution sitting a public hearing concerning the proposed vacation of utility easements on Baton Rouge Road. A request has been received to vacate a 10-foot wide utility easement composed of two adjoining 5-foot utility easements located on lots 3 and 4 of the Riverbend 5th Edition on Baton Rouge Road. The property owner plans to combine these two parcels, making this utility easement unnecessary. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Phil?
Second, Your Honor.
Second, Osama. Any discussion? This is a roll call, beginning with Phil.
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Osama?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Item F. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution adopting the City of Muscatine Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. This map-based plan depicts existing planned and needed improvements to bike and pedestrian infrastructure. The plan will work in concert with other City of Muscatine plans and policies, including the comprehensive plan, the complete streets policy, the sidewalk policy, and the capital improvement plan. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Jeanette?
Second.
Second. Bob, any discussion? A roll call, beginning with Jeanette.
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
And Mike?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Item G. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to enter into an ambulance billing service agreement and to purchase software for the patient care reporting system. Three quotes were received with the low being from PCC at 7.5% of collections. With this change, it is also necessary to replace the patient care reporting system. Four different, four different software systems were demonstrated. Staff is recommending ESO solutions for this system. PCC will pay $6,995 towards the cost of the software, making ESO the low bid at $8,746.50. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Osama? Second, anyone?
Second.
Second. Bob, any discussion?
Chief? The billing service, they fight with the insurance companies and do your battles for you as well as for you tell us.
What are we getting out of this?
Yes, that is correct. The billing company will do the work for us. They will do the three soft billings. They will work with the patient. They will interact and work with the hospitals and the insurance companies, work comp, all that, so that's part of the contract.
Are they gonna keep up our percentage of return on our money? Because we've had a, what, a clearance to like 86% or something that's been paid?
You mean for net collections? Yeah, our collections, the projections with the conversations that we've had, we're gonna probably see a better collection rate. We've negotiated a lower rate percentage. If you remember back when we started the ambulance service in 2000, we were at 8.5% collections with Tri-Tec. I actually renegotiated that with Tri-Tec back in 2012, I believe, and we negotiated to a flat fee. None of the other ambulance billing companies are doing a flat fee, and so percentage base is 7.5%. So that's the lowest out of everybody, which is pretty good.
And annual savings of roughly, was it two grand, I believe?
No, we estimated 5,000 to 6,000, and that was, that was very conservative. Insurance and billing and reimbursements is pretty complicated, depends on your payer mix, it depends on your copays and all that stuff, but again, pretty conservative. It could be, you know, $10,000 to $15,000 savings, just the difference between the $30 flat fee versus 7.5% of net collections.
Thank you.
Anyone else, council?
Thanks, chief.
Thanks.
This is a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion carries five to zero. Item H. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order for the Musser Park Playground Safety Resurfacing. Ten bids were received with the low bid from Surface America Incorporated in the amount of $66,072.60. There is $77,000 budgeted for this project. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Jeanette? Second, anyone?
Second.
Second.
We give that to Phil. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion carries five to zero. Item I. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve the purchase of a truck for park maintenance. Five bids were received with the low bid from Krieger Motor Company in the amount of $32,143 for a 2015 Ford F-250 truck. There is $35,000 budgeted for this purchase. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Osama?
Second.
Second. Phil, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion carries five to zero. Item J. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve the purchase of a rotary mower for Parks and Recreation. Three of the four bids received met the city's minimum requested specifications. The low bid was from Canal Implement in the amount of $40,949.17. There is $35,000 budgeted for this purchase. The cost savings in the amount of $2,857 for the truck purchase will help offset some of the overage on the mower. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Bob?
Second.
Second. Jeanette, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion carries five to zero. Item K. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve a contract for uniform purchases for city employees. Five bids were received with Phelps, the uniform specialist submitting the low bid. In addition, they are able to provide all the requested clothing items. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Mike?
Second, Your Honor.
Second, Osama. Any discussion? Also a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion carries five to zero. Item L. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to declare city property as surplus and to authorize its sale. Once declared as surplus, the property will be disposed of on public surplus, which is to date, which to date has netted the city $120,000. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Phil?
Second.
Second. Jeanette, any discussion?
I would like to request that they, that I went through the list and there's a light bar. Is that off the police car or? It seemed like there was an emergency light bar that was part of that. Could we have that removed? And find some other, find some other way to, if you want to sell it to somebody, fine, but I don't.
You want to make sure it goes to an appropriate agency?
Yeah.
Okay. We can do that.
So you want me to amend the motion?
We'll make sure it gets sent.
Okay. That's fine. I just, there, because there was, there's been at least one instance that I know of that a person was pulled over on a gravel road and beat the crap out of because they had the light bar. Not in Muscatine, but.
Anyone else, council? Okay, we have motion and a second. This is a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion carries five to zero. Item M. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve the closure of streets for the proposed Merrill Hotel and Convention Center project. The closures would be as follows. Mississippi Drive, westbound traffic lane, 12 feet from existing curb along proposed hotel property between Iowa Avenue and Chestnut Streets. The second would be Chestnut Street from Mississippi Drive north to the alley entrance. And the third would be the alley behind the proposed hotel property at 119 West Mississippi Drive from Chestnut Street, approximately 190 feet to the east. The street closures will become effective August 24th, 2015, and will remain in place through the entire construction duration until August 1st, 2017. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Mike?
Second, Your Honor.
Second, Osama. Any discussion?
Mayor, has the residents in that area been notified?
Not to date, Your Honor. I mean, we'll be working going forward to make sure there's notification to the, and we'll get it out to the press and the website, et cetera.
And this is only until the construction is complete?
Yes. Except there will be a request from the hotel coming forward for their drop-off site. I mentioned that in one of my updates, or a couple of my updates, so that'll be coming forward at a later date. One quick question. If the hotel folks could hang on after the meeting, I got one quick question, too. Thanks.
Anyone else, council? Okay, this is a voice vote as well. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion carries five to zero. Item N. Because there is no in-depth meeting in the month of August, this item is put on the agenda. It's not an action item, but Greg wants to speak to it. Proposed TIF agreement for city council review. Greg, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick update. Council's seen this in their update, and this is a very basic agreement. Minimum assessed value, there's two of them as noted. The minimum number of jobs is 40, probably closer to 56 as the documents attached indicate. Wages are also attached as well. The developer did request an expedited repayment schedule, but it is still equivalent to the tenure at 50%, no difference, same amount. That schedule is attached. It's for six years. This is Long Highway 61 across from Walmart. As part of that project, the home there will be taken down as well. That area cleaned up. The only other difference in the proposed project is that they'd like to do this in two phases. The initial multi-tenant phase will be phase one, and phase two will be the restaurant, so much like the Fridley Agreement, we'll have two trigger dates there for the, for the, for the project, based on when the, when the project starts.
But they're gonna get their money in the first six years? Or for seven years?
Each one would be a six-year repayment period.
Each one would be as soon as the trigger's pulled. Okay, okay.
Anyone else, council?
I have some questions. It's got two parts. Number, this project, the second building, the restaurant building, they're gonna, you said it's gonna guarantee it will be built by the end of 19, or 2019 or something like that. Those are all built to spec for Steak 'n Shake or somebody else. If you don't have a lease, they're not gonna build a building.
It'll be in the agreement, and if they fail to, if they fail to meet the conditions of the agreement, the agreement will not be triggered, or in this case, well, I mean, I guess that's, that's our fallback. If it's not triggered within the timeframe, the agreements null and void as it relates to that, that portion of the contract.
General question, Greg. I don't know, when somebody applies for this, what are the qualifications they're getting at? We have some leverage, but you tell me, because I don't really know.
We have a wide variety of agreements within the city limits. We have a small commercial that has a drop, that has a deceleration lane on the south of town. We have, most recently, we have the Fridley Agreement. We have the, the two warehouse agreements, and Heinz, that was also part of the IEDA, what's the word? What was the application? High Quality Jobs, thank you. High Quality Jobs application, so it's a wide variety. In all of these agreements, we have some basic criteria that we, that we always typically include. We do a minimum assessed valuation. We have an annual appropriation, so the. so the entire amount of the debt does not account against our debt limit, only the annual payments. Uh, we typically, in fact, I believe all of those agreements have a, a minimum jobs requirement, and/or minimum payroll amount. Oftentimes, there's public infrastructure involved, for example, with Fridley, uh, there was public infrastructure. And in those cases, those, uh, for example, with Fridley, we, we went beyond the ten-year fifty percent minimum because there was significant amount of public infrastructure that was upfronted by the, by the developer. In this case, there is not significant or any public infrastructure involved. Uh, did not go beyond the basic, uh, agreement that, uh, is out there. But, uh, so when they, when they, when they do go above and beyond, you know, whether it's, you know, it's a high-quality jobs program with, with significant, uh, significant jobs, or if there's significant public infrastructure, or, or simply based on the, the, uh, the size of the project, we'll, we'll consider in those negotiations something different, bring that back to city council at an in-depth session typically to re, to review before we, we go any further in the legal process.
Because on this specific project, it's a combination of, uh, professional offices and retail.
Right.
Could be anywhere. You could say, "Well, if you want TIF, make it downtown."
It could.
Could. Uh, in this, in this specific project, they're looking at the wages and salaries. There are four middle-class salaries in this project, the rest of them are minimum wage and a buck.
That's right.
So we're, that's what it means economically to Muscatine. And, uh, you know, if we were down to one dentist and he or she was gonna retire, boy, let's get another dentist in here. At a quick glance, there appears to be, and I'm not talking about the people who come here two days a week, five-day-a-week dentist, at least seventeen. And the beauty saloons, at least thirty-five, we've got already. And another Starbucks four hundred feet away.
Right.
Are we keeping people from going to Davenport by having this? No.
Probably not, no. It's purely in, purely an economic development incentive, in this case.
Is that what we want, though?
With the minimum jobs, well, I, I don't know. Uh, it, we've had, uh, in-depth sessions before, we reviewed the basic policy and, and if that basic policy is, is gonna, gonna change, it's probably something we need to talk about and what we wanna, what we wanna do. This does not go beyond that very basic, uh, program.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it does not, in my mind, qualify for anything more than the very basic program. If there was additional public infrastructure, high-quality jobs, et cetera, we would, we would talk about it. But no, it does not go beyond that minimum requ, that minimum basic agreement, not at all.
Muscatine will not be a better place for one more dentist, or one more beauty salon.
We will get a site cleaned up that's, uh, that is a nuisance in that, in that location in front of a local industry.
The, the developer's gonna make out like a bandit between the TIF and the depreciation. I don't know if that's, if that's gonna help the tenants at all. But have we thought about using some, there's some leverage we have about, well, we'll, we'll talk about TIF, but let's talk about location? That would help the city of Muscatine?
We have not to date, no.
Fellow council members?
It's something we, I mean, we, if, it's something that the council could have an in-depth meeting and talk about where we wanna go with TIF.
You know, the Highway Six through Corleville was, is, started as a bypass. Is that what we want, look like Corleville on Highway sixty-one?
We want what, uh, Corleville looks like off of Interstate, uh, eighty.
I think we could use some leverage, use, we got leverage.
Do we have leverage? Greg, I don't know if you wanna step to the podium as well as regarding leverage, but I, I don't know that we have the leverage, uh, that we're, that we, that we think we do with the TIF project. Whether it's, whether it's this commercial project or if it's a, um, um, let's see, what was the other project we talked about recently? You know, or, you know, let's, let's, let's say a hotel project. Or, 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 you know, just this simple commercial project. It, it's all about location, 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 and where those folks wanna be. Uh, and, you know, it's more of a, they're either coming or they're not coming question, in my mind. And i- if, if we, if we wanna risk the loss, uh, we can certainly do that, uh, and have that policy. Otherwise, they're gonna go, in, in this case, for example, uh, they wanna be closest to the highest local option sales tax provider in the city, and that's Walmart, and that's across the street, yeah, so...
You know, the hotels are different, that's gonna bring a lot of money into Muscatine.
It is, different type of project, absolutely.
But I can't, there's no intrinsic value in any of those three retail operations that we should have to think, "Oh, boy, somebody's gonna swing a hammer, we better give them money."
Yeah, I like swinging a hammer.
You know, we'd like to have you to consider some other sites.
Oh, we, we, we do that quite often. And, uh, and push, uh, push other sites, absolutely. I think that came up multiple, multiple times.
In that particular location, uh, I don't know who the current owner is, but I know who owned it previously, and they bought it to be a restaurant eventually. And then it, it didn't become a restaurant, he sat on it, sat on it, sat on it, sat on it. And so it, I would, I mean, frankly, I'd like to see something else there. I can't imagine Han would be opposed to having an improvement in that site. It, I mean, it's, it's not necessarily an eyesore, but it's not a beautiful spot at this point.
But site location often comes up during, during our, uh, numerous discussions, in trying to find the, uh, the proper location from our perspective. But our perspective and the developer's perspective do not always, uh, agree. Uh, so that's why we bring it forward and, uh, and in certain cases, we, we just don't feel that we can recommend anything beyond the basic, and that's one of these cases here, this is, this is a very basic agreement, it doesn't, doesn't reach beyond that basic agreement.
I think Mike will be happy if that restaurant is IHOP or something like that.
Yeah, I like pancakes.
Uh, I can see that, yeah.
Pancakes are good. I just, you know, we don't need another Corleville, I guess that's all I'm concerned about, we should, we should use it to our advantage.
Anyone else, counsel? Okay, thank you, Greg. Uh, folks, let's move along to item fourteen, communications, council members, starting with Councilman Raywell.
I, I do have. Uh, just by sheer accident, uh, I was out on Lucas Street yesterday and the sirens, I could hear them behind me and around me. Uh, there was a police car outside a home, private home. And very quickly, uh, one of the engine trucks at high speed came up and just stopped pretty much in the middle of the street and four firefighters jumped out, knew exactly what compartment to go to for what bag, and they triple-timed into that house. I mean, they, there was teamwork and amazing hustle. And about three minutes later, an ambulance came and same thing, boom, in, in they go. I wasn't inside, I'm sure they knew what they were doing, but I mean, it was just clear evidence that when you call for help, we've got people who are highly trained and highly motivated and understand the severity, and they respond. Uh, so everybody gets a, an A-plus, it was an impressive demonstration. So my hat's off to, uh, Kevin, your chief, Battalion Chief Cannon's crew, it was his crew. They did a, it was an impressive job, and I just wanted, want them to know it was noticed.
Very good, Phil?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Osama?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Bob?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Jeanette?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Greg?
Emily couldn't be here tonight, uh, for introductions, but Emily's been on the job since July fifth, I believe, and, uh... And, yes, communications and, and working diligently and getting out and about, uh, city departments. And y- you may have noticed, uh, her work on, online, social media and in the newspaper as well. Just a quick metric note, uh, Facebook page, uh, our typical, uh, Facebook pages or, or posts on Facebook would get four to six hundred, uh, if it was a really good post. Uh, we're seeing, uh, between, uh, on our, on our top, top posts, we're seeing four and five thousand posts, uh, or visitors to those posts. So, big difference in a short amount of time.
So what do you do in your spare time now?
I'm sorry?
What do you do in your spare time now?
I do Twitter and, and Instagram myself.
Grant. Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Okay, I would like to, I have a couple of points. Uh, number one, I'd like to thank Councilman Fitzgerald for filling in for me a few weeks back, I really appreciate it. Uh, and the other point is, I believe this is Jason Leigus from Muscatine Journal, his last council meeting. So, uh, thank you for what you do and what you've been, you've been doing, uh, it's much appreciated. Any other business, counsel?
There's no in-depth, Mr. Mayor, next week?
No in-depth in August. No other business, is there a motion to adjourn?
You...